Mayor Sagata.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
President.
Commissioner Schuster.
President.
Commissioner Giacomo.
President.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here. All please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got a couple of announcements tonight. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, March 25th, 6 p.m., here in the chambers. And at this time, the city of Raton would also like to express our condolences to the family of retired Deputy Fire Chief Kenneth Mestes. Deputy Fire Chief Mestes served on the Raton Fire Department for 20-plus years until his retirement, and he has recently passed, so our condolences to him and his family. All right, item five. Items from citizens present. At this time, we will entertain comments from the crowd. However, if it's something related to something on the item, on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up. And yeah, crowd, I speak loosely tonight, it's a little sparse. So is there anyone who wish to address the?
Yes.
If you'd please address, state your name and tell us.
My name's Lawrence Montoya, and I had a, what I believe is a very serious and dangerous situation that occurred February 1st at 8:55 p.m. on my way to the gas station. And if you guys would bear with me here for a second, because I'm kind of new, but the situation involves me, and I don't know.
Well, we generally give three minutes to speak, so.
Okay. My name's Lawrence Montoya, I'm 59-years-old. I'm distable from a prior accident, then having my leg crushed between an asphalt roller and a steel wheel roller. I have wires in my neck, but on February 21st at 8:55, I was going from right there by Plaza Supermarket on Sugarree up to the gas station by 87, going up towards Lake. I wasn't doing nothing wrong, minding my own business, and on the way, I had a police car pull up behind me. And I want to make a note, this policeman and police never turned his lights on me. But the situation was, he pulled up behind me, followed me, tailgated me aggressively, back and forth, side to side, and I saw he was a police officer. So I proceeded going, I wasn't going to pull over till he turned his lights on. He slowed down, and then coming up to the turn on Guadalupe, where you go to the church, he come up for the second time, tailgating me, real close, or kind of like, but he was trying to make me commit a crime, and I didn't fall for it, get my cool. Well, he started slowing down, and as I went down the turn to go down Guadalupe, I thought maybe he would turn off. Well, he didn't. So he comes up on me again for the third time, tailgating me, close, I mean, close. If I would've hit my brake, he would've hit me. And I was going down the road on Guadalupe to where you hit the bottom on Cook, on that real sharp turn, right there. His speed, I mean, 20 miles an hour. And I'm watching this cop behind me, tailgating me, I mean, close. I mean, he close, real aggressive. I go into the turn, slow down, he comes up right behind me, and is on my rear end, super, super close, following me all the way around the turn. I started getting worried, he had some plan for me, he was going to do something. And I'm reminding you again, he never turned his lights on. Then we're going up the street right there on East Cook. I don't know what happened, or what he did, but I'm watching him, I hear him proceeding, and I see him driving breakfast all over the road, and he turned into that bike path. And I was pretty sure he hit that bike curb, I don't know, the only one that knows him. Then I pulled up, and I turned my blinker on, because I knew the only place I was going to be safe was the gas station, because they had all lit up, and they put new cameras under. So when I turned my blinker on, this officer hit the gas, pushed his car out, and as I was making the turn, he catches me. But I knew if I got to the gas station, he won't mess with me, because he have lights and camera on him. So as I pull into the gas station, got out of my truck, and I was going to confront him. Instead, he makes the turn pretty good, he wasn't going slow like me and you do. He went at a pretty good rate of speed, and I couldn't read the number on his police car. But I came in and made a complaint, because I couldn't go to the chief of police, because of prior incidents with him, and he made a statement of, "Don't ever come back in my building again, and I'm going to have you thrown out and arrested." So I haven't been in that doors of the police station every bit of three years. If I had to pay a ticket to go to court, I come into these doors and they go around, because I don't trust them. But I've had cooperation from everybody, secretaries, city manager, but I'm not getting no cooperation from Raton Police Department. It's been 14 and 8, 23 days.
Can I stop you right here?
Yes, sir.
Did you get a ticket or anything? Did he turn the lights on?
That's what I told you.
Did he pull you over?
No.
Did he confront you? Then I'm not seeing where we're going here.
Okay. Well, if you guys, every day that this officer is on duty, behind his badge and that car, you're putting the people in Raton at risk and in danger.
This is hearsay on your part.
No, it's not hearsay. I observed it. I observed it with my own eyes.
We will look into the matter. Do cars have cameras?
But they don't have come on until the officer turns them on. And the only time they turn them on is for a traffic stop.
We will look into it. Nothing was done to you here.
He harassed me.
I don't see that.
He harassed me with a deadly weapon, he intimidated me with a deadly weapon. You see it how you want, but I saw, what I saw with my own eyes, and you or nobody else can tell me. Every day you allow this officer to be behind that gun and that badge, you're putting him at risk.
We got your point. We got your point. Thank you for sharing.
Okay. But you guys have a ticking time bomb on your head, and if this were to happen to your kid, or your daughter, or your wife.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you. This wasn't very much coming to here, because I can see you're one-sided already. But I will be making as much noise as this if I got to go to Channel 4 News, or whoever I got to go to, because he could, if he would've landed to me, he could have penalized me due to my previous injuries of a broken neck, and apparently, my words and the safety of the public team doesn't matter, and forget those.
We'll move right on here.
I'll get it.
And if you allow it, the way I see it, you should be a commissioner.
We'll look into it.
Your jacket, your jacket.
Okay, let's move on. Action items. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of February 25 regular meeting minutes. You'll notice there was an addendum, so we will need a motion in that, on these minutes this evening. It was, and that was deleted from the original motor, or it was omitted from the original minutes and added, so.
Motion to approve the February 25, 2025, regular minutes?
Second. Yeah, motion, a second to approve the amended minutes of the February 25 meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion, city of Raton fiscal year 26 interim budget preparation guidelines. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration provides guidelines to ensure statutory compliance with Section 6.6.2 NMSA 1978 that requires each local public body to furnish and file with the Department of Finance and Administration, DFA, Local Government Division, LGD, a proposed interim budget for the next fiscal year. Furthermore, the statute authorizes the Local Government Division to prescribe the form for all budgets, books, records, and accounts for local public bodies. The core of this guidance is interim budget and final budget deadlines, which are the interim budget submittal to LGBMS, the interim budget resolution on LGBMS, the interim property tax resolution on LGBMS, interim budget submittal on LGBMS are all due no later than June 1st, 2025. The Local Government Division interim approval letter is also due at that time. Final budget revisions on LGBMS are due on July 31st, 2025, are as the final budget resolution, the final budget supporting schedules, the fourth quarter report, and the fourth quarter resolution. The Local Division final approval letter is set on September 6th, 2025. So pretty much what all this means is, you want to have a planning session for the budgets.
I guess we ought to get started.
Discussion.
Any questions, comments?
One question I had in here, that it appears they make a big deal out of the use of credit cards for making payments in City Hall. Do we have much of that?
We do not. Not yet. We might next year, but not now.
Should that be considered as some kind of a policy that we need to?
Yes, we're in the process of finalizing the credit card policy for the city.
Well, no, I mean, as, in relation to somebody coming in and paying their water bill with it, or that's where they're going with this.
Right.
I guess I'm not sure what the question is.
That's been happening for.
So probably for the last three years, DFA's had this process where there's a separate form that we have to send in, like a certification if we're already accepting credit cards. So the last couple of years, we've had in our letter and our checklist that the city's working towards that, but the water and the electric utility are currently doing that. So then we have to submit some additional documentation with that as part of our budget submission. So, and they review that every year. That is something that we're.
Just kind of common practice, with not anything we need to.
No, and I think what they're, you know, really checking is to make sure whatever company you're using, that they're PCI compliant, and so there's a lot of things that you got to make sure that if you're handling people's credit card information, that it's protected. We're not typically storing that information in our systems, but yeah, we have to give them certain assurances, and that's where that checklist comes in, that they provide us as part of the budget submission, so.
I just noticed this year that there's the really specific guidance on some of the funds tacked on with like the Cannabis Regulation Act, having a specific fund number and all those kind of things. Are we complying with that? Are we adding those things in, or?
So the way we're doing it right now, we do have a separate fund set up for the cannabis, but they do allow us at the end of the fiscal year to transfer those funds into the general fund. So as we're submitting quarterly reports throughout the year, we are tracking the cannabis in a separate fund, but we also budget a transfer back into the general fund, which is allowable. But yeah, they do have special fund categories, especially for these recruitment funds for law enforcement. Now we have the firefighter recruitment fund grant that we got this year. So we have, as we've received those grants, tried to set that up in the LGBMS system according to the guidance provided by DFA. LEPF, we've already had that one for a few years. What else did they have? Corrections recruitment fund doesn't apply to us, so. So yeah, and I think our analyst is really good at providing us this information, so even if we did submit a quarterly report, if it was in the wrong category or something, they would contact us. Yeah, and there's been some years they've told us to use this budget code, and then a month later, they changed their mind, and it's a different budget code, so, you know, we pretty much do whatever they require. And then it, I think it was on the last page, there is a budget training coming up this month that Taryn Giacomo's our newest staff member, and she'll be attending that, because it is for, training for new users. So she's still learning the state system, but that'll be an excellent training, and so she will attend that on March 21st. It's a virtual Teams meeting.
Thank you. And I think we should have some kind of transition.
Yep. Why don't you kind of poll the commission, see what dates are available in that, Mr. Mestes?
Yes, Mayor.
And we'll go from there. All right, anything else on the budget? Okay. Moving on, item C, deliberate and act on event forum for Cinco de Mayo, May 3rd and 4th at Ripley Park by Carmen and Carmelita Martinez. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, unfortunately Carmen Martinez was unable to attend tonight, but she has submitted an event forum for the annual Cinco de Mayo celebration to be held at Ripley Park, May 3rd and 4th. The festivities will include music, food, and cultural activities. Local businesses will have the opportunity to showcase their service, and food trucks will provide refreshment. Last year's event, according to Placer AI, attracted over 2,500 unique visitors. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this section.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Mestes?
I will move to approve the Cinco de Mayo, May 3rd and 4th, although that's not Cinco de Mayo. At Ripley Park by Carmen and Carmelita Martinez.
I'll second.
Motion, a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-12 concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal at 220 North Fourth Street. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the Engineering Department and Code Enforcement have determined that the building at 220 North Fourth, described as parcel 1135186203173, Lot 5, Block 44 of the Maxwell North Edition of the city of Raton, is a dangerous building. This resolution will order the removal within 30 days after the notice is delivered to the owner and published in the newspaper. If such removal is not commenced by the owner or written objection is filed with the city clerk, asking for heren within 30 days after service of such notice, the city shall proceed with the removal of the structure at a cost provided by 151.25 of the city of Raton ordinances. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this section.
All right, any comments, questions on this? This is one of them that we've been working with for a while. All right, entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-12 concerning a dangerous building or premises requiring removal at 220 North Fourth Street.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution E, well, number E, Resolution 2025-13 concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal at 436 Savage Avenue. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the Engineering Department and Code Enforcement have determined that the building at 436 Savage Avenue, described as parcel 1135186192207, Block 5 of the Maxwell North Edition of the city of Raton, is a dangerous building. This resolution will order the removal within 30 days after notices delivered to the owner and published in the newspaper. If such removal is not commenced by the owner or written objection is filed with the city clerk, asking for heren within 30 days after service of such notice, the city shall proceed with the removal of the structure at a cost provided by 151.25 of the city of Raton ordinances. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this section.
And this is the house just up the street here, right? Any comments, questions on this one?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-13 concerning a dangerous building or premises requiring removal at 436 Savage Avenue.
A second. A motion, a second to adopt. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-14, application for fiscal year 2526, LGRF Cooperative Co-op Funding to NMDOT District 4. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the city of Raton proposes a street maintenance preservation project to include crack sealing, cold mix asphalt patch material, and base course material for street and alley surfacing with a total project cost of $150,000, including a New Mexico DOT funding of $112,500, and the city of Raton funding $37,500 in anticipation of funding from New Mexico Department of Transportation, with the city funding coming from gas tax. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this section.
Comments, questions? Do we have a scope of kind of area, Jase?
Mayor and Commissioner, for this item, these are essentially stockpiled materials, kind of what the world looks like without gas tax. The base course would be something we'd work in alleys for maintenance on. The 275 tons of op mix would be street patches, utility cuts. The crack sealing is kind of undefined, but it's going to be, you know, arterial streets, and it's not going to go very far.
Yeah.
These are items that we would have normally bought out of regular budget, but in the absence of it, we're looking to use a co-op. We submitted this identical application last year, but because we received MAP funding, we didn't receive co-op funding, so we're coming back with the same ask.
Any other questions?
I will move to approve. Is it Resolution 2025-14? Application for fiscal year 202526, LGRF Cooperative Funding to NMDOT District 4.
We have a motion, a second to adopt Resolution 2025-14. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item G, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-15, application for fiscal year 2526, Municipal Arterial Program MAP Funding to NMDOT District 4. And Mr. Phillips, since you're still standing there, we'll just jump to you.
Mayor and Commissioner, with us having received MAP funding last year, it's not probable, but not impossible, that we would receive MAP funding back-to-back years. So we've submitted a request this year, and what we're trying to do is take care of large asphalt areas that are still in pretty decent shape. So my thought on this is that we would apply a double penetration chip seal surface course to South Fourth, North Fourth, essentially Apache, north to Nevada Avenue, where we had left off on previous chip seals, and then the extents of North Fourth Street from its intersection near Alpine Lumber to approximately the filter plant. That's kind of what these quantities flush out to, really wide streets and large numbers that are still savable. We could probably buy ourselves 20 years if we resurface them now. We would probably do some crack sealing in advance on these streets. The bang for the buck on chip seal is still good, but prices are escalating. I mean, these estimates are my best guess, but the quantity could be less than that. So, you know, we're looking at a $420,000 application, 105 of our money, 315 of DOT money, and, I mean, these are probably $4 million worth of streets to repave and asphalt, so Band-Aids on bullet holes till we get to better days.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Phillips? And these are just applications.
These are just applications.
These are not funds that we are spending.
And on the financial side, if we are successful the way these timeout, I would anticipate that gas tax would meet these matching fund requirements by FY '26. He says optimistically.
Any comments, questions? Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-15, application for fiscal year 2526 Municipal Arterial Program Funding to NMDOT District 4. Second.
We have a motion, a second to adopt Resolution 2025-15.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one thing. The Municipal Arterial Program is unique in the sense that there's certain categories that you can only apply for. So we obviously have needs throughout all of town, but their categories are, it has to take traffic off of a state highway, so South Fourth Street, parallel Second Street, or be a major arterial, of which we only have three or four. So, you know, you may get asked, well, why not this street? Why that? For this branch of funding, we're kind of limited in the available streets I can apply for. It's not that we don't see the needs in other parts of town, it's just that these fit the program.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, deliberate and act on American Ramp Company quote for a skate park and pump track at Romero Park utilizing Sourcewell Co-op Procurement Contract Number 112420-ARC, contingent upon DFA approval. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a quote from American Ramp Company Quote for a skate park pump and pump track at Romero Park utilizing the Sourcewell Co-op Procurement Contract. This amount of product, the amount of the project is $194,946.30 to be funded by the Romero Park Improvement Grant of 500K from DFA. We ask that this resolution be contingent on DFA approval, and the city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
Comments, questions?
I think this is going to be great if we get it done.
This is all ramp money, so that's even better.
I'm late about ramp money.
Yep.
Hope to add something to the Romero Park that people will be able to enjoy and gather for.
Hopefully something to build on.
Yeah, something to build on in the future. It's not probably the skate park we want yet, but it's a good step.
Entertain a motion.
I will move to approve. American Ramp Company Quote for a skate park and pump track at Romero Park utilizing Sourcewell Co-op Procurement Contract 112420-ARC, contingent upon DFA approval.
A motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion?
I just question if we're using, I would like the additive alternative, alternate to be added into that, is that a?
That is under the $196,000 mode approved, so that would include the item.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on Park Care Proposal for 2025 Landfill Environmental Monitoring Services Contract. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a proposal for the 2025 Environmental Monitoring and Reporting Services for the city of Raton landfill in order to comply with New Mexico Environmental Department requirements. To complete this project, the lump sum fee of $30,000 excluding New Mexico GRT with monthly invoicing of this amount, approximately $7,700, is allocated for subcontractor analysis for groundwater samples, and this will be paid out of solid waste enterprise funds. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this section.
Questions, comments? This is one of the requirements when we close the landfill.
Mr. Honeyfield asked how long have we had this, and October 4th, 2042. I'm sure we'll all be here to vote for that proposal.
You bet.
It'd be great.
I was surprised to see Mike Creepow is still involved in this.
Yes, yes.
Wow.
I will make a motion to approve the Park Care Proposal for 2025 Landfill Environmental Monitoring Services Contract.
Motion, a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on out-of-state job for Mayor James Neil Sagata Jr. This is for the main. This is for the Main Street Event. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, as stated in our last commission meeting, I inadvertently left out the mayor out of the state travel for April sixth through eighth to attend the twenty-two-five Main Street Now Conference in Philadelphia, PA, designed to help local leaders improve and strengthen the social, civic, and economic fabric of their communities. Total estimate of this trip is one thousand dollars. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
Any comments, questions?
I definitely.
I'll abstain from this one.
I appreciate that it's broken down into the budget. I think that's helpful for us to understand, and I would be happy to make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for Mayor James Neil Sagata Junior.
I won't be on a diet, it looks like. Okay. Any further discussion?
No meals for you.
All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
I abstain, sorry. Opposed? Motion carries.
Who seconded?
Pardon?
Who seconded that? Commissioner Jacomo.
Jacomo, yeah.
Sorry.
Item K, deliberate an act on Resolution twenty-two-five sixteen, budget adjustment number ten. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I yield the floor to Raton City Chief of Staff, Ms. Michael Lynn Antenucci.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, we bring to you budget adjustment number ten. I am making various adjustments for some of the travel that was approved at the previous meeting, and then also in anticipation of the approval for the mayor's travel as well. I did also have some additional expenses this year for the procurement certification trainings and new staff training. The city clerk, myself, and my new staff member kind of shared the same line items, so I am requesting an adjustment there. Also, at a previous meeting, you did approve the zoning code update, and I believe we had reported at that time that that would be coming out of general fund reserves. And then, I don't know if you recall, but the last couple of years, we had CARES Act grant funding to pay for the utilities at the airport, so it's kind of been a few years since we've had to cover those costs ourselves, but I found that I've under budgeted that line item for this year. But those grant funds were fully expended earlier in this year, and so I don't see any opportunity for us to receive additional funds for that. Also, we did at a previous meeting approve, well, let's see, I'm jumping ahead, under the Fund Two-O-eight, we do have some EMS training, but we also have the sale of the ambulance to Vermejo and the excise tax grant that we get from the county that I didn't have in the budget, so I'm just adjusting the line items for those revenues and expenses. And then in our economic development, we did, let's see, we did approve some things earlier in the year for attendance to the Brownfield Conference, and then Better Cities also assisted us with the recruitment for the position for Economic Development Director. And then we also just recently completed the appraisals as well in our lobbyist expense, so I'm making some adjustments there. And then under the juvenile justice grant, you did approve this at a previous meeting, but it was on the form that CYFD requires, and then now we've received CYFD approval, so I'll need to put it into the LGBMS system as an adjustment as well. That's all I have for you this evening. Is there any questions?
Questions, comments?
I will move to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash sixteen, budget adjustment. Second.
Motion a second to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five sixteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line upfront, as the legislature closes in, we have been really learning a lot and have gotten in front of a few committees this year to discuss everything from agriculture to housing. The treasurer is busy working on the inventory, which they hope to finish by tomorrow. The police are recruiting two police and one dispatch position. The fire department is recruiting for three positions. Public Works have been working overtime, adjusting with both spring and winter, with plowing of snow and working on the ballfields at the same time. With engineering, the city engineer and I will be traveling to Santa Fe tomorrow with the Economic Development Director to meet with Santa Fe Community College to discuss bringing career and technical education training and education to some of our facilities. Within our facilities, we have good news that the pumps are up and running now at the Aquatic Center. The clerk is scheduled for upcoming professional development within Economic Development. Our Raton Director of Community and Economic Development, Cynthia Molina, will share her vast business expertise and talk about business mission websites and the power of LinkedIn at the Core Educational Mixer coming up this Thursday at the Colfax Ale Cellar. Mentions and dispatches, I would like to give a shout out to Leonard Zamora, who's been everywhere now and repairing a number of buildings, including the doors at the Visitor Center. Finally, some closing thoughts, and I'd like to credit our city engineer, Jayden Welch, with this. The city engineer attended Aviation Day and growing movements in the space industry clustering in New Mexico and Colorado. They are describing it as a space corridor from Denver to Albuquerque. This year, they have a new name for it, Space Valley. Think Silicon Valley of the space industry. For those of you that don't know Mr. Welch, he had a previous career building satellites, and I had a previous career helping destroy them. Raton is right in the middle of that corridor. Our city engineer and I are exploring options for us to participate. You can't drive from the one end to the other without driving through Raton. We're the portal in the middle. We could be instrumental in making this movement successful. As one of my heroes, Carl Sagan, once said, "The stars call to us."
All right, any other additional comments? Commissioner Honeyfield? Commissioner Jacomo? Commissioner Schuster?
No.
Mayor Proten?
Nothing.
I have nothing either. This meeting stands adjourned.